Evening, everyone. If we could please rise to the Pledge of Allegiance. Could have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Dixon?
Here.
Mrs. Diglio, here. Mrs. LaFois, here. Mrs. Cheats, here. Mayor Kuss?
Here. In accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act, notice of this regular meeting was given to the two newspapers of record and posted on the official bulletin board on January 5th, 2024. I'll now entertain a motion to approve the regular meeting minutes from the October 28th, 2024 meeting.
I will make the motion to approve the regular meetings of October 28th, 2024.
I'll second.
Any discussion, changes? Okay, roll call, please.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheats?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes. Now entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the special meeting for interviews on October 28th, 2024.
I will also make the motion to approve the October 28th, 2024 special meeting minutes.
I'll second. Any discussion, changes? All right, roll call.
Mr. Dixon?
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio?
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois?
Yes.
Mrs. Cheats?
Yes.
Mayor Kuss?
Yes. At this point in the meeting, the Town Council welcomes comments from any member of the public on any topic. To help facilitate an orderly meeting and to permit the opportunity for anyone who wishes to speak, speakers are asked to take one turn at the microphone and please limit their comments to three minutes. The clerk will keep time. If reading from a prepared statement, please provide a copy and email a copy to the clerk's office after making your comments, so it may be properly reflected in the minutes. Council may choose to come out after the entire public portion has concluded. Please identify yourself and spell your last name for the record. As is customary, we'll begin with anyone in person who would like to speak first. So walk to the microphone. Not seeing anyone in person, we'll transition to Zoom. If anyone on Zoom would like to offer comments, please indicate so by raising your hands. Not seeing anyone on Zoom, we will close the first public session this evening and move to council and manager reports, beginning with Town Manager Rousseau.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Before we go into our reports, we have a little deviation with a presentation from the Greater Newton Area Chamber of Commerce. Come through me.
Thank you, Town Council and Town Manager. Good evening, fellow Newtonians. It is immense honor to stand before you today to present the Terrell Lizzell Award. This award recognizes not just a person but a legacy, one marked by unwearing commitment, exceptional talent, and a profound impact. Today, we celebrate an individual who has dedicated their life to the GNCC and to the town of Newton, inspiring countless of others along the way. Sandy Diglio has served as a guiding light for many, demonstrating what it means to lead with integrity, passion, and purpose. Throughout the last 25 years of being a part of the Chamber, Sandy has achieved remarkable milestones, from simply starting as a GNCC member to then serving on the Executive Board as Secretary for numerous of years. From notable achievements to projects to running the town's annual holiday and Memorial Day parade since 1988, 34 years, I did the math. Her work has not only set a high standard within the Chamber, but has also paved the way for future generations. Her innovative spirit and relentless pursuit of excellence has changed the landscape for the GNCC for the better. But beyond all the accolades and achievements, what truly sets Sandy apart is her dedication to uplifting others. She has always taken the time to mentor, to nurture, and to guide. Many of us here today can attest to the profound influences she had made on our lives. As we honor Sandy with a Terrell Lizzell Award, let us not only celebrate her past, but also look to the future where she continues to inspire. She reminds us that success is not just a, not just personal triumphs, but about the impact we have on those around us. Sandy Diglio, thank you for your unwavering dedication, your vision, and the mark on all of us. We are truly deeply grateful for all your contributions. It was great pride that we present to you this Lifetime Achievement Award. Congratulations. We love you.
Thank you, Chamber. Next item, Flags of Honor. Just want to say thank you to everyone who attended and participated. And the event went very well. We did receive from our friends in Trenton, the news release from the DEP about the drought warning, which was put into effect today by Governor Murphy and the DEP Commissioner. So everybody in New Jersey is in this stage. Public is encouraged to reduce water use, let lawns go dormant for the season, winterize and shut off irrigation systems, only use a watering can to water flowers and shrubs to allow them to go dormant for the season, use a broom to sweep the sidewalk rather than a hose, use a commercial car wash that recycles water, as washing your car at home typically results in more water use. To save water at home, fix leaky faucets and pipes, consider replacing your toilet with low-flow versions. This can save around 11,000 gallons per year. Upgrade your showerhead to low flow, which can save 7,700 gallons per year, and upgrade your faucets or install faucet aerators, which can also save 16,000 gallons per year. This information was posted on our website today. Also, wanted to give good news. The town found out today that we're getting a $198,000 grant from the NJDOT for Mountain View, Palmer, and Trinity Street paving projects. So that's 198,000 from the DOT. Thanks to Corey and everybody at HPA for that. Trinity. And last but not least, if you have your handy-dandy League magazine, page 32, very exciting. Newton mural, finally. It only took how long to get this published? So when you get a chance, read the article that Kat and I put together. And a nice, nice honor, and this is their league, league edition, so it's a nice highlight for the town. That's all, Mayor. Thank you.
I assume Newton's spelled correctly. Councilmember Dixon?
Yeah, the Halloween parade was on the Halloween. It was a great. It's a great event. Happy to see all the kids out there again with their costumes. Thank you to everybody who came out with their trunks supporting the event as well. I think one of my favorite costumes was probably Invisible Man.
Oh, yeah, that was great.
That was a great one. So just thank you for everybody for that. And then I just wanted to congratulate Chief Van Noland. He had his walkout this afternoon. So congratulations to him, and we wish him best of luck in retirement. That's it for now.
Thank you. Councilmember Diglio?
Okay. I'd also like to thank Steve for all of the things he's done over all of his career, which after having had it read today is quite extensive. Gonna miss Steve, but I'm more than happy to welcome Joe as the incoming chief. On November 9th, I attended the Flags of Honor, and Tom, you did a wonderful job with that, as did whoever helped organize it. It's always a beautiful event honoring our veterans. Then on November 11th, I was invited to attend the flag burning ceremony and dedication of the flag burning drum over at the VFW. And I want to especially thank Deb Danielson for all the effort that she put in. It was a matter of just two weeks from start to finish from getting it organized, and it's actually there now. We actually couldn't burn any flags because of the problem with the lack of, shall we say, water from heaven, but we still had a wonderful ceremony, and I had a chance to be with the vets for quite a while afterwards. As did you, Michelle. You were also there. And Tom, I do have one question. How far below the spill line are we at Morris Lake?
It's pretty bad right now. I'll get you the updated numbers. So one thing to consider, the state is giving us flexibility, whether we want to go above and beyond the drought measures. I do have a resolution that Eric's office drafted. It's up to the governing body if you want to implement further restrictions at the next meeting. Maybe that's something I can discuss offline with the mayor and the deputy mayor, but yeah, it's a pretty severe situation right now.
That's what I thought. That's all.
Thank you. Councilmember Cheats?
Good evening. Congratulations again, Sandy, on your award from the Chamber. It is well deserved. So I'll start out by thanking the residents that voted for myself and also my, my running mate, Sean Paul Kuss. I personally take the work that we do very seriously, spend countless hours reading, researching, asking questions, bothering Tom on occasion, bothering other council members on occasion to, to just learn. And so I, you know, I, I want to make a difference, and I'm making that commitment for the next four years. So those of you that, that didn't vote in favor of one or both of us, or you don't have any issues or concerns, we really do encourage you to come to council meetings and express your concerns or reach out to us. Our information is on the town website, but you can also reach out to us through social media or other means. And so on, yeah, I'll move on. Congratulations also to Chief Van Noland. It was a pleasure not only working with you or for you, but also with you the, the past few years. Joey, as I've said before, you have some big shoes to fill, but we know that you are capable of, of filling those shoes, and we look forward to working with you in the years to come. And then the Halloween parade was good. I know I take credit for the weather when it's good, but it wasn't my idea to have this very dry weather, so I gotta, I gotta make some adjustments and get some rain going here. But I, related to that, the Halloween parade was beautiful. Some of the folks in costumes were melting a little, but the chocolate was melting too, but it was a good time, and a lot of creative costumes, as was mentioned. I'm sure the judges had a hard time. And then Mayor, Deputy Mayor LaFois and I, we had the opportunity to participate in a ceremony recently on Liberty Street where we recognized Lily Atkinson for her efforts in creating a crosswalk for her friends to walk to school safely. So this young, young female came to a council meeting with a drawing and said, I'd like to see if we could put in a crosswalk so my friends could walk to school more safely. And Mr. Russo took that and got ahold of the town engineers and were able to make it happen, and it was just a really nice tribute to, to the work that Lily did. And also just to show her that we appreciate, again, someone coming to a council meeting, reporting a problem, and us being able to address it. So that's how, you know, we want to keep that process going forward. Young, old, middle-aged, come to the meetings. We are here to listen. Let's see. There was a lot that happened the last two weeks, so I apologize for being a little weary, and I'm sure I'll miss some things, but so also, oh, so on November 2nd, not as a representative of the council, but I'm mentioning it because the organization is within the town of Newton. So with some friends able to attend the Ginny's House black and white dinner, and get set. Yeah, great, great organization. Sorry. Some of you might recall, years, a couple of years ago, there was a bad accident in Sparta where a mother driving to work at a hospital as a nurse wasn't her day to work, left her family on a Sunday afternoon and was in a motor vehicle accident not far from her house and was killed. And so I was used to Ginny's House more for victims of sexual assault, not realizing that they help other victims of other crimes. And in this case, a family lost a loved one and two little daughters. So through the, the grieving process and all that, the father heard of Ginny's House. Somebody recommended that he go there to get help, and they have been a tremendous help to this family. So that was a lesson that I learned that goes beyond just helping other children of domestic violence or sexual assaults. So I just had to plug Ginny's House for the work that they do. And I know Steve, Chief Van Noland was part of that, so Joey, if you get to continue to support that organization. Great. That's good news to, to hear. Also, yeah, congratulations to Tom on your award as well at the Chamber event. And I was also at the Flags of Honor ceremony. Great job. I'm gonna take credit for the weather that day, because it was a beautiful ceremony that you would want to happen in the sun with all the flags. Monica did an exceptional job. Tom, Carrie, I know she had a lot of help, and you need that to make that day special, and it really was. And Mayor, I thought that your speech was very well received. It was a, it was a very good message that you portrayed, and I'll, I'll let you speak about that if you wish to. And yeah, I think, oh, and then last evening, I was able to attend the 200 Club Annual Dinner, and again, another wonderful event, and just another, you know, if you're looking to support an organization, the 200 Club does awesome work for our volunteer and emergency services. And then just speaking of emergency services, I know our fire department has been exceptionally busy, you know, helping with fires in town, obviously, but also out of town, and also the, you know, the, the huge fire event that's taking place in West Mulford Greenwood Lake area. So we just wish them, you know, to stay safe and, you know, pray for some rain. That is all. Sorry, Carrie.
Thank you, Councilmember Cheats. Deputy Mayor LaFois?
Yes, thank you. So the other comments I just wanted to add about Halloween, the Halloween event. So first, thank you to the Newton Fire Department for sponsoring it and the Moose Lodge. Thank you to all the businesses in town that donated items for the various groups that we gave prizes to. But I want to thank our first responders, Police Department, First Aid Squad, in addition to the Fire Department for being a part of the event, which I feel like every year we get more and more people, and I know it's weather dependent, but I think we have more trunks this year and more littles that participated. But then we had a night that was very busy, and I feel like ran very late this year, and I think that had something to do with the weather. The trick-or-treaters were out for a long time. And I know that we also got some calls. First Aid Squad and the Fire Department got some calls out, and I saw the police being active. So just thank you to everybody for providing a safe evening for everyone. And, you know, thank you to Kimberly, the Recreation Commission, and everyone else that put on that, also helped to put on the event, because I really think that it was well done. And Matt, thank you for always being such a good sport. We give you the wonderful job of holding up the signs and parading. I don't know how many times you end up walking around in a circle, but it's quite a few, especially when we have a hard time deciding which costumes to wear too. So thank you for, for playing that role. And then as Michelle mentioned, I also wanted to just say thank you to the Atkinson family. And really, I think, you know, when we did the dedication of the two crosswalks at Liberty Street, you know, when, in looking at it, we're like, oh, yeah, gosh, this does make a lot of sense. Like, we have people that are walking up here. But it took a citizen and a young citizen at that to come forward and be brave in her words to say, I think this is something that's talent should consider. And she, one of the things that our town engineer said at the dedication was she came complete with her own drawing of the intersection. And when you compared it to the final renderings that the engineer put together, it wasn't that very different. We had to pay for those professional renderings.
It's true.
But it wasn't very different. And so, you know, this is a family that, you know, they're First Aid Squad members. Mom is a, is a teacher at Mary, or meet teachers at Marymount Avenue. The kids are involved in sports, and I just, you know, I, I feel like we're looking at the future in so many ways of that family. So thank you, Lily, for bringing that to the attention, and everybody can make a difference in this town. I think is the story that we take from that, or the lesson we take from that. November 5th was election day. Congratulations to both JP and to Michelle on your reelection campaigns and job well done. We're happy to see you back to get re sworn in again in January. Thank you. I was not in town, so was not unfortunately able to attend the Flags of Honor event, but I watched it, Facebook Live. Thank you. And I also feel like our honorary list grows every year a little bit. And so these are, you know, our veterans who people sponsor flags for, and I, I can compare with Michelle, your, your comments, JP, were really wonderful, and you paid tribute to your father and his service as well. And I just think the whole program is done so respectfully. And I know Carmen Deo, who's the executive director at Community Foundation, at Community Hope, Community Hope. I know him just from the nonprofit space, and he always loves coming to town and loves this event. And as a matter of fact, this year was the first year that Newton's Flag of, Flags of Honor event had its own webpage on Community Hope's website. So we got a little, little street cred about that. So thank you. Congratulations to Tom and Sandy, Sandy, for your Lifetime Achievement Award, and more than well deserved for the Chamber, and Tom, congratulations on your Newtonian Award as well. Very well deserved, for sure. And thank you also for writing this article for the League of Municipalities, New Jersey Municipalities Magazine. Actually, I know it was delayed in getting in, but call it a little territorial, but we are getting ready to go to conventions. So the fact that news in the magazine in the edition right before we go to convention next week is a little sort of a pride for me. So thank you. I think, you know, we have to be our own best advocates for the amazing things that happen in this town all the time. I mean, I think that's our responsibility as elected officials and certainly the administration of the town, but if we're not going to constantly publicize our best attributes, no one else is going to, and we certainly get dinged when there are things that, that don't go so well. So why not promote the things that do really go well? So thank you for that. Tom made mention of the New Jersey drought condition that we're in. We also did receive an email from today from JC PNL who wanted to just update us that they are continuously monitoring conditions that can lead to wildfires. And they make note, Rich makes note in his email to us that they're working closely with fire police and our OEM officials on wildlife prevention efforts, but also on response, and they're taking some proactive measures with potential power line situations and things like that. So we are watching everything quite closely, and I just want to remind our residents, you know, it's starting to get a little bit cold, and you might think of like, why not have a bonfire in the backyard and roast some marshmallows? This is not the time to do that. So I think some of the fires are locally started, were started, they think, by cigarettes and a few other things seem harmless in the moment, but really could lead to widespread devastation. We had a firefighter that lost a life, and as Michelle said, to our firefighters, volunteers who are also going out to help in all parts of the state, you know, thank you and please be safe. This Saturday is the Atlantic Health Newton Medical Center Annual Festival of Life events, festival life, festival lights events. So we'll be attending that, but just wanted to remind everybody that it creates a lot of traffic on High Street 94 and around the hospital, our police department. Our fire department will be out there because they typically have fireworks. Are we not, are we doing them this year? Not doing them? Okay, that's smart. But just keep in mind, for those that might be in the area, that that is a heavily congested, well-attended event with the students that are out there that celebrate the hospital is, is lit up, but that is going to be this Saturday. Our holiday, because we don't have another meeting until, I don't know, we have one at the end of the month, but did want to make mention of the holiday parade on the 30th. That's coming up. And then, of course, our town tree lighting is December 6th. And I did want to call out that we now have at our recycling center, if you have not been to the town of Newton Recycling Center recently, we've planted trees, we've added facilities, we've added extras, but one thing to note, I've actually had a couple of people come up and say, what, what can I do with books? But we now have book bins at our recycling center that will take hardcover, softcover books, really any kind of book, DVDs, CDs, and the bins are equipped with monitors that when they reach a certain level, there's a, a message that's sent to the company for them to come clean out the bins. But I think it's a really good resource. And again, Deb Danielson, the recreation, or the who's, who's her committee that has helped on this a little bit, Tom?
Shay Tree.
Shay Tree Commission, maybe a little bit. We've really added some, I think, incredible services to our recycling program in addition to other things that we take at different times during the year. So if you haven't checked that out, that is over there. But they have done, you know, they've added scrap metal, rigid, rigid plastic, lead battery collection, and then now the book drop. So it's really a, a resource, I think, that a lot of people may not take advantage of in the town that is free to Newton residents. And then finally, as my colleagues have said, I do want to congratulate Chief Van Nuland on a very long and successful career, much of which has been spent here at the town of Newton. Thank him for his service. And I think one of the things I remember Steve saying when he first came into the position and to the role is that he was looking to make the Newton Police Department, in addition to the town. He wanted to leave it better than he found it, and not because that was a comment on the former chief or the, or the officers before him, but because he was excited about the things that are on the horizon for him to implement as during his tenure of chief, right? So when we think about the animal control program, we think about the new technology and those types of things. I, I, you know, those were new initiatives that were implemented under his tenure, and so want to publicly recognize him for his service and longevity. I know he was emotional tonight when he did his walkout, and there were a lot of people, retired police officers, other departments, people from all over that came to recognize him, which was a great showing, which leaves us then with our next police chief and Joey Danville. We're looking forward to you taking the reins and being our 13th chief of police in the town of Newton, and look forward to the contributions that you'll make to the continued success and growth of the department. And I want to wish you the best of luck as you bring along, Joey, the next generation of leadership within the police department. It was evidenced tonight when we were at the walkout. When I look at the very young faces that were lined up for Chief Van Nuland's walkout that, that we have a, a young but mighty force that is going to need some leadership, and I think that you're going to bring that. So thank you for putting up with my long-winded comments. I'm done.
You're welcome. Believe it or not, I will actually add something. In addition to echoing everything that has been said. So as the deputy mayor and a few others alluded to, you know, it is certainly a very high, extreme risk, as the Forest Fire Service puts it, for fires and a little more closer to home, you know, just to kind of emphasize the risk that does exist. Last night, there was an exterior fire that extended to the porch of a residence on Clinton Street. So, you know, the risk, you know, luckily, the, the fire department was able to knock it down in, in time before it really, you know, took over the house, but you know, the, the risk is there, and, you know, despite the risk existing in all the public statements, you know, the fire department is still continuously responding to folks who are either, you know, enjoying a chimney outside on fire, or a fire in a chimney, rather, or in an exterior fire pit, you know, and, and the fire department has to come by and notify them that, you know, we, we can't have that right now. So you know, protect yourself, protect your neighbors. You know, this is a close-knit community, not only in terms of our, you know, community engagement, but in terms of how close your house is to another house. So please, please be careful. Although we have had a few emergency calls, they've uptaken them lately. The last set of sirens that you would have heard this evening was actually on a, on a very positive note. The Newton High School varsity field hockey team actually won their sectional title today. So there was a, an entourage, a welcoming party that led them back into town as they approached. So if you heard some sirens out there, that's what that was from. And then for anyone who, who did want to catch the Flags of Honor event, it is, or was recorded, rather, it's, it's available on our social media pages, so feel free to check that out as well. And that's all that I have. Well, now move to our ordinances section this evening. We have a second reading and public hearing of two ordinances. We'll start with Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty one, which is an ordinance authorizing the sale of a two thousand twelve Ford Explorer, no longer needed for public use, to Sussex County Community College. Now open the hearing to the public. If anyone in person would like to speak, feel free to step up to the microphone. Not seeing said person will transition to Zoom. Uh, if anyone online would like to speak, please indicate so by raising your hand. Not seeing anyone, we will close the hearing to the public and I will entertain a motion to act on Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty one.
I will make the motion to act on Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty one. Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. Well, now move to Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty two. Additional second reading and public hearing is an ordinance to amend, revise, and supplement Chapter three zero one of the Newton Town Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic. So I'm sorry, I jumped to, uh, three zero seven, my apologies. Of the Newton Town Code entitled Vehicles and Traffic, most notably Section three zero seven dash forty four point one, entitled Crosswalks, by adding a new mid-block crosswalk across Diller Avenue in the Town of Newton. Now open the hearing to the public. If uh those in person would like to speak, please uh indicate so by stepping to the microphone. If not, anyone on Zoom can also raise their hand to indicate their desire to comment on this matter. Not seeing in anyone in either form, we will close the hearing to the public. And I'll entertain a motion to approve Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty two.
I'll make a motion to approve Ordinance twenty twenty four dash thirty two.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Okay, a roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. Now move to the Consent Agenda. All items listed with an asterisk are considered to be routine and non-controversial by the Town Council and will be approved by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a council member so requests, in which case the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence on the agenda. Mr. Russo, if you would not mind, a rundown, please.
Sure. Two sixty five is Animal Control for twenty twenty five with Hampton. Two sixty six is the Chapter one fifty nine insertion of the Body Armor Grant, two thousand three hundred forty five dollars. Two sixty seven is the appointment of Chief of Police and execution of an employment agreement with Joseph Danibel, modified Article eleven, page seven. Resolution two sixty eight concurs with my appointment of Brandon Posey as a Class Two. Two sixty nine is Shared Service Agreement Animal Control for Hard Work. Two seventy is a change order number one, Clinton Street, West Nelson Division, minus one thousand four hundred forty one dollars. Two seventy one, change order number one, ADA Rams, Crosswalks, Liberty Street, Linwood, um minus three thousand six hundred seventy dollars. Two seventy two, change order one, ADA Duma, Duma, Valley View and Babette, increase of one thousand four hundred fifty. Change order number one, sidewalk improvements, Water Street, increase fifteen hundred dollars. Two seventy four approves transfers as per the CMFO. Two seventy five is the annual agreement between the Town of Newton and Newton Parking Authority and two seventy six is bills and vouchers.
Thank you. Uh, is there any resolution that a council member would like to remove for separate discussion or vote? I would like to remove uh two sixty seven. Any others?
I have to abstain from my one.
Would you like to remove two seventy five?
Sure. That's the one. Yes, parking authority. Yes.
Okay. Any others?
I'll offer the consent agenda as presented, uh removing two sixty seven dash twenty twenty four and two seventy five dash twenty twenty four for separate votes.
I'll second.
Any discussions? Roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Uh, abstention on checks one one eight seven six one one nine three zero. Yes, otherwise. Now enter.
Yep, so I will offer um Resolution two sixty seven dash twenty twenty four.
I'll second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
I abstain. Entertain a motion for Resolution two seventy five.
I will offer Resolution two seventy five dash twenty twenty four.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Abstain.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. Now move to our second public session this evening. Same rules apply. If anyone in person would like to speak, you have three minutes. Walk up to the microphone. Anyone on Zoom? Raise your hand. Not seeing anyone in either form, we'll close the second public session. Uh, we'll move to our second council and manager comment section for any final thoughts.
Uh, one thing that Helen forgot to mention at the Recycling Center is that they have now also have flag drop-offs. They also have put an extra outdoor flag at the VFW. So anyone who wants to bring their flag down, because you shouldn't burn it or throw it out, uh you can bring it to either location.
And I will also add on to your good news about the uh high school field hockey team that they are in the state final on Saturday, the North-South game. So hopefully we have another victory parade.
Okay.
Anything? Okay. All right.
Congratulations, Steve.
Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
All right, well now move to our next section. Uh, we have a proposed resolution to enter executive session as a resolution providing for a meeting not open to the public in accordance with the provisions of the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA ten colon four dash twelve for the purpose of personnel, the town manager's annual review.
I will make a motion to enter an executive session at seven forty six P M.
Any discussion?
All right, who got a second? Have a good night.
Uh, roll call.
Mr. Dixon.
Yes.
Mrs. Diglio.
Yes.
Mrs. LaFois.
Yes.
Mrs. Teets.
Yes.
Mayor Kuss.
Yes. Mr. Bernstein, uh your canned statement.
Good day.
Um, we'll be aware of the executive session being conducted, the limestone sentence provided, and the election may be taken at the conclusion of the meeting. And thank you.
Thank you.